Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to our Gladstone Planning Commission meeting on Tuesday, June 20th, at 6:30 PM. And Tammy, will you do a roll call, please?
Counselor Volbada. Excuse me, Commissioner Volbada. Commissioner Wees. Commissioner Langston.
Present.
Commissioner Labonte.
Present.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Present.
Commissioner Mercero.
Present.
Chair Smith.
Present. Let's do the flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening, everyone. We have a pretty full agenda. We're going to be approving the meeting minutes for our meeting in May, and then our monthly planning report. Item number three, public hearing on file DR 2304, design review for approval of a 20,000 square foot unenclosed canopy with attached lean-to over existing paved area used for annual gatherings of the Oregon Conference of the Seventh Day Adventists. Item number four, public hearing, file DR-23-05, design review for construction of a new 6,528 square foot two-story Wong's Building Supply Commercial Building. And then item number five is a public hearing for file TXT-23-01, Gladstone Municipal Code Amendments to Charter 17.14 in our multi-house household residential district. Okay. Would anyone like to entertain, make a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
The approval motion was made by Commissioner Smith and seconded by Commissioner Langston. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Langston.
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte.
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes. Meeting minutes approved. Item number two, our monthly planning report.
Thank you, Chair Smith.
Thank you.
We have two monthly planning reports in the packet for you this evening because we did not have a May Planning Commission meeting. So both April and May are included for your review, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions? Okay, let's, I guess, let's begin with our first public hearing. Okay, this is item number three, and it's for file, I'm going to officially open the public hearing for file number DR-23-04. This is for the Seventh Day Adventists on Oakfield Road. And it is now 6:35. We're opening the public hearing. Are there any abstentions from this hearing body? Anybody have any conflicts of interest?
I have none.
Commissioner Mercero, do you have any?
I have none.
Okay. How about ex parte contact?
No, no, no.
Okay.
None for me.
Okay, thank you very much, Commissioners. Okay. Let's go on here. Okay, if you testify, you must raise all issues you wish to address at this hearing. If your issue is not raised at this hearing, it cannot be raised later in any appeal. Your comments should state why the application should or should not be approved, or include your proposed modifications you believe are necessary for approval according to the standards. Because this is the initial evidentiary hearing, state law grants any party the right to request a continuance of this hearing, or ask the record remain open after the hearing is closed. If you do not raise specific issues at the final evidentiary hearing, or by close of the record, or fail to provide statements or evidence to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal the decision to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that particular issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed position of conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Chair Smith. We'll just queue up a quick PowerPoint here and run through the staff report for this evening.
I'm so proud of you. Please, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Tammy.
I'm not going to be trying opening.
Thank you.
Okay, agenda item number three this evening, as Chair Smith stated, is a design review application for a canopy cover and lean-to at 19800 Oakfield Road. The application is for a 20,000 square foot unenclosed cover, and then the attached lean-to is on one side. It's covering an existing paved area that's used for annual gatherings of the Oregon Conference of Seventh Day Adventists. As you can see on the site plan here on the screen, which is a little faded, but along the far left side of your screen is Oakfield Road with the existing bookstore facing it. And so this canopy cover will be tucked further into the site and a little northeast of that bookstore. The topography is shown on this site, but nothing is being proposed to change regarding the site topography because the existing location of this cover is paved already. Here's a rendering of what the proposed canopy would look like, and as you can see on the right side, the end is the enclosed portion that's kind of near the focal point or the stage type area. So it will be open on three sides and be designed of a material to blend into other architecture, signage, fencing, that sort of thing on the site. The project site is zoned office park and is 71 acres in size. There are no environmental overlays on the site. The metro habitat map does show habitat conservation area, but it has it as a zero habitat level, which means it was historically mapped there, but has been found to not be actual habitat area. So there's no applicable environmental overlays, no floodplain habitat areas or sensitive areas. We did send public and agency notice out to everyone who's by code supposed to get it. So the property owner, everyone within 250 feet who owns property, as well as the agencies that are affected, and we got a few agency comments back on this one that are included into the staff report this evening. Again, the current zoning is the office park zoning OP, and that zone does have an interesting permitted uses where it links back to the C2, your community commercial zoning district. So then when going to the C2 to see what uses are permitted outright, you do see meeting hall type gathering facilities. So that's where the use permission comes from. As far as the landscaping plan, it is included in the packet. There aren't a lot of changes proposed, but the applicant did provide it to demonstrate that the minimum standards are being met with this proposal, that additional landscaping isn't needed because of the site already existing with both ground cover and trees. We asked the applicant to make a reasonable estimate of what part of the site would be considered, like the development area, instead of requiring them to look at all 71 acres for this kind of small addition to the overall site. So they did, I think, a good job of designating anywhere that, like a vehicle went into the site and circulate, or maybe a pedestrian from the sidewalk. So they really did a pretty good sphere of influence around the proposed development site to demonstrate that there's adequate landscaping in the area. So with that, this was a pretty simple review. There are a couple of conditions in addition to our standard conditions that are being recommended by staff. One comes out of our, our public improvements, the private stormwater system. Even though it's on the site and so considered private, it does connect into the city's public stormwater system. So we'd like to make sure that that's meeting the city's standards. So our Public Works Department would like to see that happen prior to building permit approval. And then we've seen this condition before, first transit stop improvement, improvement along McLaughlin. There are two transit stops along, I'm forgetting the name, Oakfield in front of this, thank you, Oakfield, in front of this property. So we would like them to reach out to TRIMET and make sure that if there are any improvements planned for those stops in TRIMET's long-range plan, that they're addressing that, or they're providing documentation that TRIMET's not going to require those improvements. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, does anyone have any questions? Commissioner Mercero, do you have any questions?
No questions for me.
Okay, well, how about the applicant's presentation? Where's the applicant here this evening?
I believe the applicant may be joining remotely, and they actually did indicate to me that they weren't planning to do a presentation.
Okay.
It would be Lenity Architecture, I believe, Aaron.
Aaron, okay. Hold tight, Aaron.
Although I don't believe they're planning to do a formal presentation, but be available for questions.
Okay. And they're the architect, correct?
That is correct.
Do any of the planning commissioners have any questions for the architect? No questions at all?
Aaron is on, if you have any questions.
It looks like Aaron.
Hi, everyone. This is Aaron Clark with Lenity Architecture. Yeah, that's correct. We won't be conducting a formal presentation tonight. I think the staff report and the presentation that was conducted adequately illustrated the project. I just wanted to inject a level of kind of excitement to the project. There's an annual event that occurs every year, and currently, the ownership, the Conference of Seventh Day Adventists, they actually rent a canopy every single year. And this, this investment project was put together to, you know, alleviate the hassle of that effort every single year. So it's going to be a much-needed improvement to the campus, and I'm excited to be here and to answer any questions that you may have on the project. I do also have Rod Shear here. He's the contractor, and I believe ownership is potentially present on the, on the commission floor as well if there's any operational issues. So look forward to talking about the project with you.
At this time, we don't have any questions, but I'm going to see if there's any public testimony.
Oh, may I have one question?
Go ahead.
Aaron, thank you for being here. Andrew, just a quick question regarding winds in the, in this site. The building, is it, to what extent is it to, you know, withstand heavy winds?
Yeah, so the building is a pre-manufactured metal building. So we actually have started consultation with structural engineers, and we just actually recently today, thanks to the contractor, have received the geotechnical report. So we're in the process of creating the structural foundation plans for the building permit, and that will go along with the pre-engineered manufactured building drawings and details. And those are all calculated and will be per the current Oregon Structural Specialty Code.
To your understanding, is there anything to do with slides in that area as far as landslide activity or anything?
No, there is some topography to the site that we had to deal with from a design standpoint, and we have allocated appropriate ADA viewing areas at the rear of the project, down the front of the project. But no, no considerable landslide on the site area, project site area, as shown on the project screen.
You guys, Commissioner Langston, you guys looking to have this up for this year's event? No, okay. Cool, cool. As far as during construction, you guys are going to use that, that north entrance for, for vehicles and whatnot? I'm assuming that's probably how you pull in. Guys are pretty lucky. You have properties already fenced and everything. I'd probably just encourage you guys to use, you know, some good signage on that gate so people don't just walk in and end up in your, in your site there. But yeah, it should be good. I appreciate the thoroughness of the documents that were provided. I do like the thought, the forethought on your water displacement going to the, that little biofiltration pond. Definitely want to hold, hold your water if you can. So.
Absolutely.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Okay. Do we have any public testimony? Would anybody like to speak either in favor or against or neutral testimony?
If someone's online, they can raise their hand.
Okay.
I do not see anyone that has raised their hand.
Okay, so we have no testimony. All right. Staff, do you have anything further that you'd like to add?
I do not. Staff continues to recommend approval with the two additional special conditions.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing at this time.
So moved. I'll second.
Motion was made by Commissioner Pat Smith and seconded by Commissioner Langston. Okay, so the public hearing is closed at 7:48.
That would be 6:38.
6:38, okay, thank you. 6:38.
6:48.
Okay.
6:48.
We got it.
Okay. Discussion, Commissioners. Any discussion?
I think it speaks to the history of the property and having a large enclosed area like that. I think exciting for the community.
It'll be great for their annual camp meeting.
Yes, for sure.
Yeah, in case there's any inclement weather.
Yeah. The information was pretty thorough for what we received, and like, like I said, I think it's the biofiltration and all that is nice to see. It's not necessarily hitting our system, so. Yeah, I'm good with it.
Commissioner Mercero, do you have anything you'd like to add to the discussion?
I have nothing.
Okay. Well, if there's no discussion and everyone's prepared, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve design review 2304 with the standard conditions and two special conditions of approval.
Okay, Commissioner Langston made the motion, and it was seconded by Commissioner Mercero. Tammy, would you please do a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Mercero?
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte?
Yes.
Commissioner Langston?
Yes.
Chair Smith?
Yes. It has been passed. Now for our second, item number four. Do I have to reread? I have to read, yeah. Okay. Okay. I would like to open public hearing for file DR-23-05 for Sheldon Development, Inc., and it is now 6:50. Are there any abstentions from this hearing body?
I have none. None, none.
Any conflicts of interest or ex parte?
I did visit the site today.
Okay, great. So Commissioner Mercero, any conflicts of interest, ex parte? Okay. Okay, so. And I have visited the site as well, but I have no conflicts of interest or ex parte. Okay, if you testify, you must raise all issues you wish to address at this hearing. If, if your issue is not raised at this meeting, it cannot be raised later in any appeal. Your comments should state why the application should or should not be approved, or include your proposed modifications you believe are necessary for approval according to the standards. Because this is the initial evidentiary hearing, state law grants any party the right to request a continuance of this hearing, or ask that the record remain open after the hearing is closed. If you do not raise specific issues at the final evidentiary hearing or by close of the record, or fail to provide statements or evidence to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal the decision to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that particular interest issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Chair Smith. We'll just queue up this PowerPoint and get rolling. Okay, item number four on this evening's agenda is also a design review application. This is for a Wong's Building Supply Commercial Building at 19640 and 675 McLaughlin Boulevard. The proposed project is a 6,528 approximately square foot building. A portion of the building is two stories in height with some office space above a showroom area. It'll be used as cabinet and stone countertop showroom and display area. There's also a proposed minor exception to the code that the applicant did put in for a variance request, but the design review criteria also allows the Planning Commission to designate a minor exception from a standard. So whichever pathway the Planning Commission would like to look at that through, I included findings for both the minor exception and for the variance in case one was preferable to the other. They're a little redundant in the code, but I wanted to make sure we covered all the bases. And that's regarding the loading area in the rear of the property. So I'll show you that on the site plan. And that is on the rear of the building. So just to orient to the site, on the left side of the screen is McLaughlin Boulevard. And then the dark colored polygon on the site is the proposed building. The light color or white polygon is the existing Pizza Hut on the property. So that will be demolished, as well as the existing trash enclosure. That's the small white square on the site there. If that's, if you're following, it's a little hard without being able to show the audience online a pointer. But then just behind the building is a loading area, and it's on the north side of the building. So to keep it as far away as possible from those residences to the south of the site, they are residentially zoned behind, so tax lot 1200, tax lot 1100, and tax lot 1,000 as shown on this site are adjacent and residentially zoned. So our code does require a 20-foot spacing between, say, tax lot 1200 and the loading area. However, if 20 feet were to be gained on this site, you wouldn't have enough driveway space to be able to enter the site with a vehicle and park in the rear of the site. So in order to be able to maintain that rear parking and not force the parking to the front of the site and the building to the rear, for example, really the only way to configure this does pinch that loading dock a little closer to the residential property. So the applicant does have existing fencing along that property line and is proposing to keep that fencing so that there can be a separation. And that loading dock is not anticipated to be used outside of regular business hours where it would be impactful to the residences to the south. So the other elements of this site plan to note, there is landscaping surrounding the parking area, including mature trees. There's a concrete walkway on the north side of the building that comes from the sidewalk on McLaughlin Boulevard, connects across the drive aisle to the ADA accessible parking spaces that are in the front of this spot and closest to the entrance to the building, as well as that concrete walkway goes along the building on the north and then becomes flush with the paved drive surface and crosses into the parking area. Also shown there on the north side of the site, just west of all the parking, is the trash enclosure, and that was included and shown to be screened as well. That is the site plan. And the site itself is zoned C3, which is our general commercial zoning along McLaughlin Boulevard. Property size is just over a half an acre in size with no environmental overlays. The applicant and owner of the subject site received public notice, as did all property owners within 200 feet of the site. And then our agencies did get notice, and most did provide comments on this one. So we were able to do a thorough review of those. The site's shown on the aerial here. It's two tax lots, two properties. So it's both the front along McLaughlin and the rear. Again, C3 zoning, it allows business governmental or professional office, which the upstairs space will include office space, as well as retail trade, which will be the countertop and cabinet showroom. Landscaping plan, landscaping is pretty much staying in the same locations it already is. It changes a little bit on the north side of the site to accommodate that ADA parking area. And then it's, it gets a little thicker to buffer that loading dock area, as you can see, where it says existing sight obscuring fence, and then there's some landscaping shown adjacent to that. Building elevations were submitted. They're submitted in materials that do have some variance, variation to break up the bulk of the site, but not put windows on the south side where they'd be looking into the residential area. The entrances are covered for weather protection, and there is a bit of metal shown on the front, metal paneling, which is permitted if approved by the Planning Commission. So it is up to you to decide whether the metal paneling along the front of the building over the windows is permitted. With that, staff does recommend that this application be approved with, there's actually eight special conditions of approval. The first three are regarding ODOT's requirements for the site. They had three specific conditions regarding, you know, what, what's required along McLaughlin as far as access and improvements. Number four is a little unique on this site. The finance department was given notice of this application and did raise the issue that there's an outstanding utility billing on this site from previous ownership. But because this site is being proposed for development, the city does have the ability to require that all past bills be paid to bring the site up to date. So that's being conditioned as well. Storm drainage and construction plans are being requested by the Public Works Department, and our standard fire access and water supply came from Clackamas County Fire, and erosion control came from Water Environment Services. So all of the agency recommended conditions have been included in the staff report and in the recommended approval this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is here as well.
Yes.
Ms. Austin, I have a couple.
Sure.
It was hard to tell from the drawings. Does the tax lot 1200, I believe, is the closest residential to the property itself?
Correct.
And I'm wondering if the second story on that building is going to be in the back end of the building where it would be overlooking that, that residence.
That's a good question. It, it doesn't have any windows along that south elevation. So there is second story. There, there is, let me, do you have your packet accessible if I give you a page number? There's an internal diagram of the building.
I'll take, I'll take your word for it.
Okay. We could also ask the applicant to give a more eloquent response, but there was a floor plan of where the offices overlook the showroom and where those are located. And then there are skylights shown along the whole top of that building, and I can find that page while we're, and probably even maybe project it, Tammy, I'm not sure. If I sent it to you, would we be able to do that?
Looks like they have a mezzanine on that south side. There's no windows, and they're just looking down on the store, the floor.
I believe the natural light does come from the skylights for that second floor. I believe the natural light does come from the skylights for that second floor, so we can ask the applicant to confirm.
Another question I had is under request for comments, it says property owners within two hundred and fifty feet are always notified. How about the residents of the Gloucester Apartments?
Um, I believe the property owner management would be notified of that, but not necessarily the individual residents.
Okay. Because really, they're the ones that are affected by the renters who live there are the ones that uh probably on a day to day basis would be more affected than the property owner.
Sure.
Wonder why we don't contact people like that.
Yeah, that's a really, it's a well taken point, um particularly during construction and things too. Um, yeah, that's that's a good point.
And then you mentioned the uh billing amount on the uh past due utilities. And I believe you said that there was, is is the property under new ownership now?
That is correct.
So this was an accrued bill from the prior owners.
Correct.
Thank you. I'm all done.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions?
Yeah. Oh, go ahead, bud. Your questions are always so much more interesting. Am I, so the delivery?
Can you turn your microphone on, please?
Oh, of course, thank you. Um, the deliveries here, I'm seeing that it's uh in the back of the building. That's where we're at. They're asking for the fifteen foot instead of twenty foot.
That's right.
And that, and excuse me, but what road is that connecting to back? I've seemed to have lost my way.
It it's not. You would come in from McLaughlin, a truck would come in from McLaughlin, drive into the parking area and back into that loading bay.
Okay, thank you. So that wasn't making sense to me. And I guess one more question, the um.
Yes.
And uh I'm naive to this, so I'm interested in the question about metal in the front. Why would there be, what is the issue with metal?
Your development code limits um metal in design review, and that's probably um to keep from having a lot of industrial looking buildings and commercial areas. But it does specifically state the planning commission can look at a design and say, yes, that makes sense. So um it gives you the ability to um make a determination that it matches the site and it matches what kind of development you're looking for along that corridor. Um, but yeah, it's it's your code that's got that provision.
Did did the contractor bring a sample we could see of the?
Um, they did provide the this rendering as well as materials in the packet. Yes.
Perhaps when the contractor, I'm gonna assume that you guys are gonna speak to us. Perhaps you can tell us why metal is preferable in that location versus other materials.
Um, for clarification, so we had the the minor uh appeal and uh a variance, or which one, of metal or the?
Yeah, so minor exception is an option, and that also applies to that um loading dock area. So it um your code does allow you to vary or to um make an exception of a dimensional standard with a design review, separate from a variance requirement. So um you can just decide that it makes sense for this site and this design review works well with that. Or you can decide that a variance is required to the standards and that it meets the findings of the variance section. Um, so both are in your staff report, so you could make your decision based on either.
Gotcha.
Any other questions, commissioners? Would the applicant like to come up and present?
And there's a button there for you to turn, yeah, thank you.
I'm Peter Capertts, architect, Architecture Northwest PC. You need my residence? No, okay.
Good evening, I'm Kerry Sheldon, developer, uh property owner, recently purchased property and putting together this for Wong's Building Supply.
Okay.
And we're excited to make it to here. Look forward to it and improving the property. The metal is to similar architectural design of the dealerships and the other buildings in that area. So we've tried to kind of pull together architectural pieces of what's up and down McLaughlin in the Gladstone area.
Okay, okay.
And then I'll let Peter take it from here.
So I did a couple of minor clarifications. Uh, this is not a two story building by building code definition. It's a one story building with a mezzanine. Uh, also, uh, there was reference to tilt up concrete as a building material in the staff report. Uh, the building material is concrete block, colored concrete block, not tilt up concrete. Clarification also that we do not have a loading dock. We have a ramp that can drive a truck into or up to the building overhead door. So loading activities will probably actually occur within the building envelope uh with the truck backed up to, or slightly into the overhead door. But it's not a dock situation. Uh, further clarification that I had not addressed properly was to meet building code and ADA requirements. Um, that ramp, the loading dock or the loading ramp is also providing exit, a legal exit for egress from the building. As such, the building code will probably not allow us to use the ramp designated for loading. We'll have to make it three feet wider in order to accommodate required egress. That three feet will be to the south, but it's not part of the loading area. It's going to be segregated from the loading area by a curb, a concrete curb. Yes.
So you're the actual overhead door?
Microphone.
The actual overhead door would pass for egress?
No, there's a man door.
I see the man door, yeah.
There there's.
And so that man door is connect, oh, I see, connected to the ramp, gotcha.
But I realize, I mean, my intention was just to walk out the the ramp for truck loading.
Yeah.
But the building code is gonna say, wait a second, if you have a truck there, people can't get out.
Correct, yeah.
So I will need to make that wider. Um, my original design had the pedestrian door north of the ramp. Um, but that would have pushed the ramp to like twelve or eleven feet from the residential property. So we had to flip that around to get to the minimum to have a variance. In regards to the special condition number four, utility building, utility billing, um, we request that that be limited to the period of time that the client has owned the property, which was November twenty twenty one. Um, we do not want to be responsible for the previous owner's failure to pay their utility bills. So we strenuously object to the full condition number four.
And I don't believe we have any, we being this governing body, I don't think we have any say in that, do we?
Um, I mean, you do apply the conditions, but the finance department does make the recommendation that the full amount be paid so that that's satisfied. It should have been satisfied prior to purchase of the property for sure, but it was not. So um, you know, I don't know if there's a pathway for the applicant to, you know, address that with the previous property owner, but as far as the city getting paid, that amount is due for services rendered.
Might there be a situation where the city would work with the individual or?
Yes.
Pretty much cut and dry saying this.
No.
Or would they look?
They would look at it. I mean, there might be a situation as well that there wasn't actual use, but the meter was still running, something like that. So it might be a different number than what's being shown. And I think I wrote the condition to be a little bit flexible in that way, but I'm just going to review that.
Okay.
Um, really fast before I commit that I did that. Um, but that was certainly the intent. The finance director did say, you know, this is the number we have, but we can certainly look at it and see if there are um alterations that can be made if if actual, you know, if it was just a matter of like an administrative fee being charged each month, but nothing actually running through the pipes, then maybe we can not have that happen for a length of time or something like that.
So in any vote that we would make tonight, um, would, you know, they would still have to address that after this vote.
Yeah, so if you made a condition so such as uh address the utility um fee due uh per agreement with the city finance department, then what I would recommend is that the applicant, you know, address it immediately with the finance department. Because if they do it within the appeal window and an agreement can't be come to, then they could always take it to the city council and make their case there.
I'm, I didn't think we had the right to. I was just.
Yeah, I don't think you would want to start talking about dollars and cents because you don't really have that.
It's not a wheelhouse.
But but city council could if it got to that point. So I would say the first step would be have the applicant talk with finance and see what can be worked out there. And if it can't be, then take the case to city council.
I'm curious, what is the amount?
North of twelve thousand dollars.
Wow, okay. Okay, continue on, please.
And we'd like to add that the building has been vacant, so utility usage should be zero or near zero. Um, and the current owner would like not to be responsible for previous debt.
Okay.
Oh. That's all I have. I'll be happy to answer any questions the council might have or the commission.
Commissioners, any questions?
No, I don't.
I have a question. Um, when you demolish the building, who's gonna be performing those services for the demolition?
Um, Sheldon Development.
Okay, I'm just, I'd um, I guess I should say I'm concerned knowing that it's an older building. There could be asbestos.
We've already had it tested.
Okay, and is there asbestos?
Nope, it actually came back clean.
Awesome.
Built in seventy six.
Okay.
So it was right at the end of the era.
Okay, any lead paint?
Nope.
Okay, great, wonderful.
Tests all came in clear. We have to have those tests to be able to to get rid of it, to take it to the dump.
Okay, perfect. That's the only question I had. Anybody else? Commissioner Mercero, do you have any questions?
No questions from me.
No other questions from the commissioners? Okay, well, thank you very much for your presentation.
Certainly, thank you.
Public testimony. Is there anyone that wants to speak this evening?
If anyone is on Zoom that would like to speak, you can raise your hand. I do not see anyone on Zoom.
I believe she wants to speak. Do you want to come up and speak? Please come forward and state your name and address. You have to hit the button and speak into the mic, it's recorded.
Hello.
Hello.
Um, my name's Bree Marco. My address is four seventy West Exeter. So this is, we're talking about my backyard. Um, so I guess my uh, I guess question or uh concern is really just kind, really the fence line. Um, the privacy fencing already back there is icky. And so, and it's very, very, very old. Um, but it's um close to no, no privacy since it's all falling apart. So I'm wondering if that's going to be, uh, I guess, freshened up um with with this project. Um, and then I'm just trying.
I know you're.
Doing everything I can to like match up with like, um, I'm not understanding the like three hundred feet like widening and which direction that's going. Is it going towards my house or towards the apartment buildings? Either way, I'm just wondering how that's gonna affect the the property line there or the fencing. I don't know.
We should probably have the the contractor come up and address your issues once. Do you have any other questions?
Um, not at the moment, no.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, Peter Capertts. Um, I'm not sure what widening uh she was referring to. Or is it the lot consolidation?
Yeah, I think uh if you look at the footprint of the existing building, you know, you guys are kind of moving back into the south there. Uh, you know, you're moving the building basically to her property line there. Uh, whereas right currently, the building has a little bit of uh space between the fence line and and the current building. So I think that's kind of what she's referring to. Yeah, so.
Are you tax lot twelve hundred?
I'm the one on the picture that has a little pool in the back.
So this is the existing building, correct?
There's the building.
And now this is the new building footprint.
Yes.
So that corner of the building's right on there.
And you're in tax lot twelve hundred?
That's correct.
Is it block nine?
I don't know that off the top of my head. I'm sorry, I did not come.
Well, no, you're fine, but.
I am right there, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
What is that one? Okay.
So no, no property line is being moved.
Okay.
Um, we are removing a property line between the two tax lots that are our property. So it'll be one tax lot. But the property lines abutting other properties are not changing or moving in any way.
May I ask, will there um, will there be improvements to the fencing for?
Um, we hadn't planned on it, but if the fence is not providing the necessary screening, uh, then we can upgrade the fence.
It seems like you've made some efforts to have windows not facing over people's properties. And we wonder, I guess I'm wondering if, you know, that would certainly be an improvement to the neighborhood.
Yeah, um, we have a, you know, zero setback to the property line. And by building code, we can't have windows.
Yeah.
Um, with one possible exception, um, we might be able to use a fire rated glass block to get daylight into the building through a property line wall. But we haven't pursued that.
Yeah, and I don't think, yeah.
And that really, that lets light in, but there's no visibility.
My concern is this be for the fence, um, and the improvement to the property there, which I'd like to see happen. I'm not sure.
Yes, I would agree.
If I may speak up, more than likely, we will replace all the fencing
Okay.
around the property and upgrade it with all new. Everything will be new by the time I would done. However, till I get the surveyors out there
Yep.
and pinpoint all our corners, I don't know who owns what fence, whether it belongs to the property owner or it's ours.
Yep.
At that point, I usually go knocking on door, door to door to door and get permission to rebuild the fence by all the property owners.
And fences aren't cheap, but they're not totally expensive either.
No, no, it's a drop in a bucket compared to the improvement, but you want the whole project to finish off nice.
Yeah, yeah, great. And I'm assuming, being that close, it's gonna be tough working back there and maintaining that fence as it is, so.
But it's possible.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's almost, it's so much easier when we knock on everybody's door and get their permission. We can stand in their side of the fence and build it as we go through.
For sure.
Clean our mess and clean our way out.
Commissioners, any other questions? No?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any, is there any other public testimony? Would anybody else like to speak? Okay.
Nothing on Zoom.
Nothing, okay, thank you. Okay, based on that, no more testimony. Is there anything you'd like to do in the way of a recap?
Yes, thank you. I've I've been making a few updates while you've been having your conversation just to make sure that instead of discussing tilt up concrete, the um findings do address the colored concrete block. Um, instead of referring to a loading dock, we're referring to a loading ramp. Um, instead of saying it's a two story building, we're saying a one story building with a mezzanine. Um, and then staff would recommend um updating special condition number four to add the um statement as determined with the finance director um to that. So that allows that first step of talking with the finance director before needing to decide whether it goes to council. Um, and then based on the discussion as well, um, I would recommend adding condition number nine fencing. Prior to um certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall um install a new side of scaring fence along at least the. install a new side of scaring fence along at least the southern boundary from the building to the eastern, eastern property line. And then that would also address any issues related to allowing that five-foot reduction in that loading ramp to the property line. It would give side obscuring protection there as well.
Okay, once we do the motion, we may have.
Absolutely. Happy to do that.
Okay, is there any rebuttal from the applicant at all based on what you just heard? That's agreeable. Okay, great. All right, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
I second.
Okay, Commissioner Labonte made the motion and Commissioner Smith made seconded it. Tammy, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Langston.
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte.
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes, public hearing is closed at seven twenty-three. Okay, discussion.
I know.
Any discussion?
Yeah, so I think we want to figure out if we want to do the variance or not on the two items.
I thought there, yeah, there, I was gonna say there's two items.
The metal and in the rear. Do we think this is a situation that should utilize that variance process? So she's saying we can approve it based on, you know, the layout of the footprint and whatnot. Like she, they were explaining with with the road access, you know, without moving the building to the back. It is the most feasible layout. So with that logic, you know, it could just be the exception, but yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm. Yeah, I don't see any problem. I think that would be the right thing to do. What about you, Commissioner Smith?
I would agree.
You would agree?
And then as far as the metal goes, it's pretty, I mean, that's pretty standard, you know?
It is up and down.
And and for a commercial building like that, you know, it's, I wouldn't expect to see anything else, really.
And it's not like an obscene amount.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's nicely done.
Mostly brick and.
Cool.
Commissioner Mercero, are you all right with those two variances?
I'm agreeing with them, yes.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, with the, yeah, with the exception. Okay. Any other discussion?
Yeah.
Go for it.
Yeah, you know, I guess one thing I feel like probably will come up is the fence. You know, just kind of listening to their presentation, it does sound like that ramp's got to widen, which is going to encroach, encroach closer to that fence. So, you know, I'm, I would, they're going to have to do it. And I think, you know, given the variance, you know, it seems like having a standard for the fence to be reap, reconstruct, or just.
Replaced.
Yeah, replaced or whatever. I think that's a fair agreement. I don't know how you guys.
You can't, you can't have a brand-new, beautiful building and an old rickety fence. That wouldn't be good. Yeah, I agree with that as well. Anyone else?
And we're happy with the, with condition number four as the going through city.
Yeah, I just would prefer that they handle it on that end, in my mind, you know, there's. What was I gonna say? Oh, and the landscaping plan wasn't real thorough, but I do appreciate the, the plantings that are going to go by the ramp like and just like to see that maintained over the years. You know, but I, that was a great idea because that was the thing. When they started talking about the ramp, I was like, well, should we put some box bushes up or, you know, yeah, so I think that that will make, make everybody happy.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
The lengthy motion.
A lengthy motion, and I think you're going to need to have her repeat what she said about all the exceptions.
Should I just give it a shot and?
Sure, yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve design review twenty-three oh five with the eight special, special conditions already presented. Allowing a exception for the metal facade and proximity of loading ramp to the property line. And also a special condition for a new perimeter fence.
And then you can add all your good stuff.
Yeah, I request to also add that we add the language of as determined with the city finance director to condition four for utility billing. And I think that does it for number nine. I have that prior to issuance of a, issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall install a new side of scaring fence along the, at least the southern property line from the new building to the eastern property, at eastern end of the property.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Commissioner Langston made the motion and Commissioner Smith seconded. Tammy, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Langston.
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte.
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes. It's been approved. Thank you. I look forward to seeing a new building.
Yes.
May I move for a five-minute recess?
Sure, go ahead. We're going to take a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
I would like to, I would like to reconvene our meeting at seven thirty-seven. And agenda item number five. Okay, it's a legislative land use hearing, public hearing on file number TXT dash two-three dash zero-one is called to order. The proposed amendments would provide general description of proposed amendments. Okay, the order of business will follow in conducting this hearing. Presentation from staff, entry of correspondence into the record, public testimony, additional staff comments, questions from the commission, hearing closed, no further, no further testimony from the audience, and discussion by commission and decision. Staff, will you please give the report?
Thank you, Chair Smith. We have a very short PowerPoint for this one as well. And I'm happy to take any feedback on the PowerPoint links too. I've shortened them from when I first adopted them. So if there's information I'm missing that would be helpful, it sounds like this evening, the interior floor plan could have been useful with the mezzanine and maybe doing a little more of the building plans when we have those.
Definitely, yeah, floor plan that's a little bit more descriptive, that would, but no, I like the fact that they're more condensed. It helps us move along.
I'm sorry, I'm so bright right here.
I guess the, the one thing I'd say is, as much as I love this photo, there's a, there's a area that is very different now than it was when this picture.
Oh, okay, sure.
And it's a little heartbreaking to me personally, but to see that, but I just, that's my side note.
So let's do a new photo as our backdrop. I mean.
I don't know.
Why not?
Other members think, but.
Or I could, you know, mix it up each month. We could like take a photo of the month as our backdrop.
That would be good.
That's great. Thank you.
It'd be like the mystery shot. You guess where it's from or something.
Exactly. I like it. Okay, we will, we'll work on that.
Go ahead.
Sure, so tonight's agenda item number five is a proposed code text amendment to your MR multi-housing residential zoning district. This is something that we met and worked session on in April, so it's pretty similar to what we talked about. Although I did have a chance to meet with Kelly Reed, our DLCD representative, and kind of talk through how Gladstone compares to other jurisdictions as far as what our densities are in the higher-density residential zoning district. And she had some valuable feedback there. So just going through this report. We have updates to both what's permitted to do in the zone as well as to the dimensional and density standards. Currently, you can do a duplex or a multifamily, which can be condos or apartments or a larger development. You can do those outright without having to come before the planning commission for design review. But there's a whole range of housing types in between duplex and multifamily that is, right now requires a conditional use permit. So it would have a kind of a lengthy review before the planning commission. And that includes your triplex, quadplex, townhouses, and then those cottage clusters that are becoming popular. Yep. So what we would like to do is, instead of saying duplex, we just say all middle housing. And then I just corrected the language from multifamily because now we're saying multi-household dwellings. And then to really focus the MR zoning district on those higher-density housing types, we want to prohibit new single household dwellings from being located in that zone. So anything that's already there can stay and doesn't become non-conforming and you can change it, you can remodel it, you can even rebuild it based on the current code because it is a permitted use and our standards do allow that. But we don't want to see a whole lot more subdividing of MR land into single-family detached because we have R seven point two and R five available for that. So we just cleaned that up so that it would be clear and objective how to review those household types. And then we looked at the dimensional standards. So on the dimensional standards, what we currently have in our code is in the top table. So we have duplexes with a three thousand square foot lot minimum. And then pretty much everything else is a five, it says everything else, five thousand, until you get to multi-household and that's three thousand is the base plus one thousand per dwelling unit. And townhouse falls into that everything else category. Five thousand square feet for a townhouse is not buildable. They're, they can't do, the market won't support a five thousand square foot footprint for a townhouse. You couldn't attach a home to another home on a five thousand to another home. It just wouldn't happen. So, yes.
By definition, is a townhome is common wall, isn't it?
Thank you, yes. A townhouse by definition is a common wall on individually-owned lot. So the lots are under individual ownership. If you can have something that looks exactly the same, but the underlying parcel is under one ownership, that's multifamily. So it's, it has to do with who owns the underlying lot. So as proposed, we looked at just making that more of a stair step, a duplex at three thousand, a triplex at four thousand, the quadplex at five thousand, and then putting the cottage clusters the same as the multifamily household because they really do kind of develop in that same sort of way. And then townhouses, having it be an average of twelve hundred square feet, which is more common for what you would see a townhouse develop on. That does result in about the same densities. Currently, like multi-household, you have a range of thirty-two to forty. We hold that for cottage cluster and multi-household, but what Kelly Reed from DLCD said was, gosh, thirty-two minimum density is pretty dense for a city like Gladstone. Cities like Milwaukee and Happy Valley are more in the, in the twenty-five range for their minimum density because sometimes the market won't bear that higher level of density in the smaller jurisdictions. So she actually recommended we reduce our maximum minimum density, which is currently thirty-two, or excuse me, thirty. She wanted, she recommended putting that down to twenty-five so that that would give a wider range for what a house, housing development could be built at.
And the numbers you're proposing, that's currently what we're seeing in the marketplace right now?
That's correct, yes. So that was the, the review that Kelly Reed did was a market review of what, what happens in Gladstone, but also what happens in surrounding jurisdictions and cities of a similar size.
Also, the changes you're proposing, are they similar to what, what Clackamas County uses?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and so a lot of these lot size standards, you will see all around the Portland metro area because we all were required to do the middle housing updates. Cities do have some ability to set those minimums, but this is pretty common for what we're seeing around the area.
We're talking strictly the MR zone?
This is just MR zone, yep.
And I apologize, I'd love to see a picture of exactly where that zone is. Is that possible or?
Sure, yeah, we could, can we pull up our zoning map from the internet?
Well, I have to stop sharing.
Oh, sure, go ahead. Yep. Yeah, and actually, I don't think I put it in the slideshow. This is a good time for me to mention it. Because we are changing that you can't do any new single-family residential in that zone, we were required by state law to send notice to everyone who owns property in that zone. It's called a measure fifty-six notice. If you change what's permitted in somebody's zone, it's basically, you, you have to notify them that you're making that change. So I had a few really nice phone conversations with people who own property in that zone and they're either, a couple already have some multifamily or smaller developments that are really excited about these changes. And a couple just had questions about it, but they all said, oh, yeah, it makes sense to not have single-family homes in this zone. This zone is for me to be able to build apartments or cottage, cottage apartments was a couple of people or townhouses. So that notice did go out and I, it was very obvious that it did because I got a lot more phone calls about that, which was great.
Make that bigger for you, hang on.
So it's the orange color on there. Let's get it bigger. So on the west side of McLaughlin.
We're missing it.
Oh, yep, thank you. Everything is just better.
And is there anyone online, Tammy, or are we?
Besides Commissioner Mercero?
We have two people.
Okay, I was gonna use my pointer, which you just lose it when you're online, but, oh, and you're all looking.
So pretty much the entire western side of McLaughlin behind the C-three zoning and then east of McLaughlin at the north end of town. And, yep.
Is this, is this area that, that you're pointing to there, is that wetland or what is?
This area that I'm pointing to now?
Yeah, my, is, is my memory serving correct? That's a green area, like an open space?
I could look, I, I, part, part of it, I think, but not all of it, yeah.
I see what you're saying. So these would be those apartments that are back there.
Right.
Oh, interesting, okay.
And then also in the.
That was my question.
Kind of northeast end of town, not far from where we just had the canopy cover, there's a little pocket just north of the C-two zoning.
Yep, that's where the Somerset, Somerset and the lodge is, above a caisson.
Yeah, typically, when you see a little pocket like that, it's probably that the housing came before the zoning. Otherwise, you see it more, you know, like along the east side of McLaughlin there where, you know, it's, it's close to transit, you know, our high, our high-frequency transit line runs along McLaughlin Boulevard. So it's always a good idea to put your hired and city housing where it has better access to those kinds of services.
Okay.
Now, when we're talking about the one up, up here, property, do we know is that entirely built out or are there some vacant lots or buildable lots in there?
I. Oh, that is the nature park, the actual zoning.
Well, yeah, so this would be nature park here.
No. I thought the nature park was the R seven point two also.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Yes, yes, you are correct. Sorry about that.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's that feel behind.
Okay.
Let's see.
Cause all the blue is the Adventist.
Cause we made the decision a while ago for a garage on that property. Okay. All right, good, but this, of course, would not be the MR zone.
Right, that's the R seven point two in that lighter yellow. Yeah, so we wouldn't be discussing that right now. Yeah, so, so it, it may be built out. A couple of the property owners I spoke to had development, but they talked about, one woman in particular talked about passing this property on to her children and envisioning them starting over and building a new form of housing on the property. So there might be some changes like that as well. Yep, okay, sure, you go back to the, there's only a couple of slides there, let's see. I could have used some of this sunshine earlier today.
I need to get it shaved for the door.
I think it's the door opener that would preclude it from coming down. Oh, thank you, it's me, yep.
Commissioner Mercero, I just wanted to verify you can see.
I can see them.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, and we can come back to those lot sizes if we'd like to. The, the staff report submitted today does have responses to Oregon statewide planning goals, the Gladstone municipal code, the metro functional plan, and the transportation planning rule. Um, so those all need to be addressed to be able to move forward a recommendation on a code text amendment, which is a comprehensive plan text amendment. Um, so those are in the staff report that was submitted to DLCD, and that would be part of your packet to move forward to city council. So with that, uh, planning staff do recommend that the commission recommend approval of the proposed text amendment to city council for a public hearing at their meeting on July eleventh.
Thank you very much. How about testimony? Do we have anyone that's wanting to testify?
I received no pre- um, prior requests, but uh, there are a couple people. There are a couple people online. Is either one, either one of you uh, requesting to speak on this? Please raise your hand. No one has raised their hand.
So we have no testimony, okay. Commissioners, are there any abstentions uh, or conflicts of interest?
No, nope.
Commissioner Mercero, any, oh, I'm sorry. And we've not received, have we received any correspondence, Tammy?
We have not.
Okay, and we have no public testimony. Okay, um, any questions or clarifications needed? Go ahead. Okay, uh, staff, do you have any further comments?
I do not.
Okay.
May I ask, would this be in any way, am I missing something, a significant increase in the amount of lots?
No, in fact, um, in the MR zone, lots are not um, as common as in the R-seven-point-two and R-five because of so much of this being under a shared ownership type situation. Um, either with the multi-household or like a quadplex is four units on one lot. Um, so the townhouses would be the only place, um, and under your current code, you're really precluding townhouses because of the five thousand square foot lot size. So that would be the only place where we might see more townhouse development, which is actually um, you know, pretty preferred living um, type for a lot of folks.
We have examples of that in the city too.
Right, yes, yes, we do. Yes, our, our R-five zone right now allows fifteen hundred square foot, so it's interesting, I would, I would wager that your um, townhouse development is in your R-five zone rather than your MR because your MR lot sizes don't support it, unless it's under one parent parcel and actually developed as multifamily, which could be the case also.
Any other questions? Okay, at this point, I'd like to close. Public hearing for file number TXT dash twenty-three dash zero-one is now closed. Okay, let's deliberate. Any questions, discussion? How are we feeling about these amendments, changes?
I'm neutral on it. They seem to be fairly minor, not, nothing earth-shaking.
And that's why I was clarifying, or is this what they are currently using with Clackamas County, which?
Yep, so yes, they are very much the industry standard for what you're seeing in our hi- in higher density zoning. Um, but like I said, our um, maximum minimum was a little bit high compared to some other cities, so we are recommending that come down just a little bit.
So the city of Milwaukee and other entities around us are, have already adopted these or?
Yeah, in fact, I um, sent an email when I was corresponding with um, Kelly Reed, who's your DLCD rep. I actually did pull up um, several different jurisdictions, so I I have that um, available. I can just, but they, they were all within a cup. Um, so I think in Milwaukee, their high-density ranges from like twenty-two to thirty units. Um, they didn't go into the different housing types in the same way. Some jurisdictions, when they adopted the middle, excuse me, the middle housing criteria, they just said middle housing is exempt from density. We don't even want to have to count those units on those individual lots, so that was another way some jurisdictions went. We're set up to go ahead and and count them. Our code is already structured in a way to do so, and so this fits in with those other cities in that way.
Okay, um, any other questions? Any more discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion. Go ahead, Andrew.
All right, I make a motion that we approve our MR zoning district code amendments, uh, file number TXT twenty-three oh one. As um, as proposed, and I second.
Commissioner Langston made the motion, and it was seconded by Commissioner Pat Smith. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Mercero. Commissioner Pat Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte.
Yes.
Commissioner Langston.
Yes.
Chair Smith.
Yes. Been approved, thank you.
Thank you, yeah, so we will bring that forward to city council on July eleventh.
Excellent. Okay, Tammy, do we have any business from the public?
I have not received anyone that has signed up to, to speak.
Okay, business from the planning commissioners. I'll start with Commissioner Langston.
Really have none, but I just want to say I really appreciate our staff, like, you guys do an amazing job and really uh, make this fun for us. I really appreciate all you guys' help.
Commissioner Mercero, do you have uh, any comments?
I agree with the last in that to appreciate the staff, and this was a pretty good-sized document. It was really pretty easy to follow.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
I do have a couple things in, uh, longer than just a one statement, so if you wanted.
Go ahead, do you have any business?
If you had anything.
Well, I had a couple, uh, sure, I could just quickly, I just, um, curious, um, just about these packets, in fact, these thick packets. My um, my better half was like, man, how much do those cost? And I'm wondering, I, these tend to get a little pricey, the packets, is it? And I guess what I'm trying to distinguish is that I assume that these are printed out by the city.
Correct.
Um, and are the larger formats, are those given to us by the developers or whomever is doing the, the work there? Okay, um, cause I know we've got the entire file, um, of course, on the internet, but that makes me feel a lot better, cause I was thinking that we were perhaps paying for those. And we're not necessarily, so that's great. That was my business. Thank you very much.
I wanted to bring up uh, uh, kind of a multifaceted issue that that's gonna affect us, all of us in the future. Um, about a month ago, I was listening to uh, an NPR program. They had a university professor from a forgotten university. And I don't know what his discipline was, but he had a lot to do with urban planning. And his specific area was electronic vehicles. And I looked today, currently, there's fifty-five thousand EVs registered in Oregon. And this professor mentioned that uh, uh, electronic vehicles are expensive. They tend to be owned by people that are homeowners. He said ninety-five percent of the EV, at the time he did the work, of the electronic vehicles were charged at home. Uh, away from home charging, there's standard plugins which can take a significant amount of time. And there are what they call su- at least for a Tesla, what they call a supercharger, which Tesla says you really shouldn't use them unless you're traveling. So he said the changes in, he said, as, as electronic vehicles come down and become more popular, they're gonna become more widespread. He said, buildings are gonna have to rent to people, are gonna have to have the capability to, to charge an electronic vehicle. And where we have buildings that are going up, literally that don't have parking at all, the cities are gonna have to get involved in, in public charging, either in lots or curbside. Um, I'm aware of two in Lake Oswego on, I think it's State Street, whatever the main uh, drag going south. Here in Gladstone, I'm only of, of, aware of one place where you can charge in public, and that's at Walgreens. And that was his point. Uh, electronic vehicles, uh, what was it? They're sixteen and a half percent of the new vehicles sold in Oregon are EVs. So I mean, this, this is the, the snowball coming. And at some point, we have apartment buildings here in town where, where people are gonna wanna live. It may have an electronic vehicle. And according to this fellow, uh, cities are gonna have to uh, pull their socks up and get in the business of charging. Or making charging available for vehicles. It seemed reasonable to me and worth mentioning.
That's, that's great, and um, I think what I'd add to that is with the climate-friendly and equitable communities rules that have just been um, adopted and are in the in the rulemaking stage, one piece that was included was forty percent of all new multifamily parking spaces have to be plumbed for EVs, so the conduit has to be provided. Um, but like you said, there are many areas in Gladstone where we wouldn't have a minimum requirement of parking spaces. But whatever number of parking spaces are being provided, forty percent of those would need to be available for that to happen. Um, the code, the, the state law doesn't require them to install that infrastructure, but that is something that we could locally determine as a requirement in our development code.
Especially with new developments.
Especially with new developments, yes.
We have an apartment building on Portland Avenue, somewhere between the high school and Gloucester, that's it, that's in the process of being emptied and then gonna be renovated. And I don't, uh, I don't know if electronic vehicle charging is, 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 would be involved with, with that particular building. But my sense was, that's what this fellow was talking about.
Yeah.
Is places like that.
Well, and, and so, you know, in addition to city funding, um, a- and again, a- anything that's done in the right of way wouldn't necessarily be like a land use um, type thing, so if it was those curbside spaces, that's um, sort of the public works department that would oversee that, but if it was on private property and something that had some sort of review with it, then we and planning would get involved. But um, there are, you know, as the city goes forward with that and looks at the climate-friendly and equitable communities rules, there's, you know, going to need to be some money put toward that, but there are opportunities through um, metro and through the state as well, so looking at those different funding sources is probably gonna be important as well.
Would this be something we would want to at least bring up to the city council to give some consideration moving forward?
Um, yes, although I wonder if it's a bit premature with us not having had our CFEC, or Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities discussions with them yet, but we could include it with that.
I would like to see that included, yeah.
Okay, um, LCDC, the Land Conservation Development Commission, is um, making their rules. The first hearings are at the end of July for the CFEC rules. And so the city council here decided they wanted to wait until those rules are pretty finalized before taking action. We have until June of twenty-twenty-four to change our codes and be up to date with CFEC. So um, your city council wanted to talk about this um, in the fall. I think we might have it on the schedule for September. Um, I'm looking at Tammy. It's either September, October that we put it on the schedule to talk to council again, once the rules are a little more solidified. Um, but I think this is part of that package for sure.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, ma'am.
Okay, um.
No, Tom already spoke.
I think I'm the only one that hasn't. Um, I just want to echo the fact that it's a pleasure working with all of you. The staff is very supportive, and I love that all of the commissioners come to the meetings prepared. And so we're able to work through a lot of hearings and a lot of data, and I just am very greatly appreciative of it. Thank you. And on that note, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
But really quickly, if I just may, um, no meeting in July. We don't have anything on your agenda for July, so a little vacation there. Um, but in August, for sure, we'll meet because we have some legislation from our city attorney regarding annexations that we'll wanna get your recommendation on.
Okay, okay, so do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I don't know who made the first motion.
Me.
Okay, Commissioner Labonte motion to adjourn the meeting, and it was seconded by Commissioner Langston. Tammy, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Langston.
Yes.
Commissioner Labonte.
Yes.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercero. Chair Smith.
Yes, meeting adjourned.